Welcome to tonight's pre-study session agenda. It is October 28, 2024. Are there any questions for the agenda before we go to reports? And then so we'll start with city council reports. I'll start with Mayor Pro Tem today.
So last week I just attended Front Range Passenger Rail Board Meeting on Friday. I don't think there's nothing too exciting yet for that. They, you know, we're all still waiting to see what's going to come of the IGA between CDOT and Front Range Passenger Rail and RTD. So trying to remember what was on there. If there's anything significant on the agenda, but. That's kind of it. I had a busy week for work, so.
Counselor Dema.
Nothing for me.
Looking through my reminders, but no, nothing at this moment. Thank you. Counselor Hott?
Nope.
Counselor Zai?
No, ma'am.
Is Counselor Ireland on? Counselor Ireland?
I attended the Appreciation Business Awards, which was a very nice occasion with the mayor. I also attended the group of businesses on 120th and Huron there about their crime, which is really a problem. They're thinking there's a perfect storm on that corner. There's an extended stay. The bus stop is there on 120th as well as a homeless shelter next to the Doubletree in Northland. And they're seeing basically a drug trafficking ring there. And we've had crime after crime reported there this week. So I'm very concerned and hopefully we as a council can address the problems there because we're going to lose businesses and retail tax dollars if we don't get serious about crime. The other thing I attended was the historical board meeting. They're working on their getting their grant from the state. They're going to submit it in January. They're all ready to go. They've been documenting the Cherokee Trail as well as the Oregon Trail in our city. So that's kind of interesting. I was trying to go to the AdCog online, but I never got a link. So I don't know if it was because they were having a dinner and they never sent it, but that's what I have to report for this week.
Thank you. I had Girl Scout meeting with a bunch of scouts and parents on Tuesday night. Commuting Solutions Wednesday Business Awards. That was great to see all of our award winners and it's just amazing, no matter what kind of business they were, they survived COVID and came out and are still there. We had up to a 45-year, no, 60-year person business that is still in business. Went to the AdCog dinner. Federal Heights put it on and they had the new person for the Health Department talk. Had a NADA meeting where we talked about 287, got a grant that will take, go from Fort Collins down to Boulder. Boulder, I think, not Boulder, yeah, Boulder in Laffey at.
The southern end of Boulder County.
Yeah, Boulder County. And anyway, so they were thrilled about that. I had Boy Scouts, a huge meeting with scouts and parents. On Thursday night, we filled a big room out at the American Legion is where they're housed for their meetings. And the Fire Department awards were Friday night and there were promotions and awards. And gosh, there was one of the people that they did rescue that they brought back to life. He was there well and you always just listen to the different scenarios and they're, you bring your Kleenex. And today at 8:30 this morning, we had our last Rocky Flat stewardship meeting. So we are now dissolved. Oh, and went to the business meeting at 120th and Huron. Counselor Azadi was there. Counselor Ireland was there and Counselor Carmelia was there. And they are having issues and we have drugs up there. We have guns up there. Yeah, we need some conversation. And they're just not the only, they happen to be one of the business areas that are, you know, being proactive and trying to do things and sharing with us, but we have some other areas. So we'll have some, I'm sure, good conversations coming. Anything else from, do you have anything?
Not for here. I do have a brief report at the DIAAS.
Okay.
Otherwise, no.
Then we have 20 minutes to take a nap or. Yay. See everybody at seven.
Welcome to tonight's City Council meeting for October 28, 2024. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to Westminster City Council meeting of October 28, 2024. Thank you for joining us and we begin, we begin every meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please, I don't know why that's in there. Sorry. We thank you for coming and would like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to the rules of decorum that are posted inside the chamber doors. These rules are in effect while all meetings are in session as well as during breaks and transitions between meetings. We want to be sure all feel welcome and remind all that there is an expectation that no attendee shall disrupt this meeting and that threats and intimidation are prohibited. No attendee shall engage in audible expressions of support or opposition for any speaker. Signs and placards are prohibited and all attendees shall remain seated in the seats provided, not in the aisles nor shall the doorways be blocked. This evening, I'd like to make a statement about Mr. Eason. He had been to our council meeting not la- he was here last, at the last meeting and he's been here for several meetings. But we want to take a moment to honor him as a Westminster resident who recently passed away. He was on his way home from this meeting, last meeting, when he had an accident. No other cars were involved, but he did pass away. He was a longtime resident with a passion for Westminster. He attended many meetings at City Hall, spoke at this podium many times and persistently engaged city leadership on many topics. We admire his determination and efforts to make Westminster a better place and our thoughts and prayers are with his family during this time. Roll call, please. Counselor Carmelia.
Present.
Counselor Demat.
Present.
Counselor Azadi.
Here.
Counselor Haat.
Present.
Mayor McNally.
Here.
Mayor Protem Narmela.
Here.
And Counselor Ireland. Do we have a motion for minutes for A1 and A2? Counselor Demat?
First, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to allow remote participation of Counselor Ireland.
Thank you for that. I always forget. Do we have a second? Or Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to allow Counselor Ireland remote attendance tonight. Although, do you want to, can it be a voice vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, minutes. Counselor Demat?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of October 14, 2024 City Council meeting and the October 21, 2024 special City Council meeting as presented.
Counselor, or Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of October 14 and October 21. Are there any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That brings us to presentation. First up is Counselor Narmela, or Mayor Protem Narmela has a presentation.
All right. Can I have Brett Eastberg and guests? I thought no one's coming up. Come on.
The whole family needs to come.
You're gonna have ge- I, I, I feel like you should just point at people too. You know, as your, go ahead and introduce your guest.
Sharon Israel. Hello, this is Sharon Israel. My partner. Any crying?
Sharon also used to work for the city, so. Good pair. All right. Brett, let me try that again. Brett Eastberg was hired in 2004 as the official development plan inspector. He is currently the reclaimed water system coordinator. That is quite a journey from one thing to the other. Yeah. Assisting 135-plus sites with CDPHEs, Regulation 84, compliance and water efficiency. Since day one, Brett has been very proud of his work for the city. His work has been crucial in implementing the new landscape regulations released in 2004, hosted many workshops and made countless site visits to ensure contractors, developers and designers were all on the same page and their projects were successful. Brett has been very instrumental in the success of the city's reclaimed program and has been a resource for other cities around the country. Westminster was the first in the state to have online training for irrigators and was the only city that provided online training for the legal contacts of our reclaimed customers. Over the years, Brett has received the external customer service, several Spirit Awards and the 2024 Parks and Public Works, sorry, and Utilities Icon Award. Congratulations. That's awesome. Outside of work, Brett's life is enriched by family. He enjoys spending time with his three sons and three grandsons. His love for fly fishing, motorcycle adventures and travel with his partner Sharon always puts a smile on his face. Brett is a Westminster native and is very proud to call Westminster his hometown. Congratulations. And this is your pin? And I feel like you want to shove it. Yeah, okay. It was bothering me.
And you have pictures. Would Cindy Benjamin meet me down front? She not here? We have to go to the parking lot and find her? David Correio. Bring family or I'll come and get them. You came alone?
I did.
You must be on duty the way you're dressed here. They give you a few minutes to get awards?
Yes.
Where is that chief anyway? David Correio started his law enforcement career with the Dallas Police Department in 1991. In 2004, David's son asked him to be part of his life in Colorado. David moved to Colorado and started with Westminster Police Department in December of 2004. Initially, David was assigned to the Swings Patrol Team and completed a short stint with the Traffic Unit. David enjoys serving with the Westminster community, answering calls for service, contacting citizens, making arrests and issuing traffic summons. Good job. He has received a Meritorious Conduct Award for his actions in patrol. He really enjoys his work in patrol and being part of the Westminster Police Department and working in the city. David has two sons, a son Christian, who is a police officer with the city of Thornton, and a daughter Casey, who is a chiropractor in Pensacola, Florida. He also has two grandsons, Carson and Connor. David looks forward to retirement in 2026 after having served in law enforcement for a total of 35 years. Thank you for your service. Walk slowly back to work. Don't trip. Ann, and I don't, Floyd? How are you tonight? Ann Cloyde was hired in 2004 as a police records technician. In 2013, she was promoted to lead police records technician. In 2017, was promoted to and currently holds the position of police records supervisor. In 2009, she was honored to have been accepted in the first leadership development class that the city had ever offered. She believes that this clapped class helped her succeed and be promoted to the supervisor position she now holds. Ann has been recognized on several teams' action awards. In 2010, the police department's peer support group team was recognized and Ann served on this team for 15 years. In 2011, she and coworkers were also recognized for their work to get all the police reports scanned into the LaserFish system. That takes a lot of work.
It does.
Gosh. Do you have to wear glasses now?
I do.
This work consisted of millions of pages of documents and was completed in record time, just under five years. Wow. That is record time. The police department is the largest user of the LaserFish system in the city. Ann has been married to her husband Chris for 51 years. Congratulations. Chris is a past city employee and retired back in 2010 after working for 20 years in the Fleet Division working on patrol vehicles. Together, Ann and Chris have three children, two daughters and a son, four grandsons and two dogs. What kind of dogs?
Britney's.
Ann's son also works for the city in property and evidence at the police department. Ann's hobbies include traveling, reading and oil painting. She actually won a People's Choice Award for one of her paintings that she entered into a contest hosted by City, Westminster City Hall a few years ago. Well, congratulations. What was it of?
It was of, it was kind of like Three Ladies and a Boat.
Nice. She also enjoys both bird and big game hunting with her husband and her son. And she has gone on five African safaris. Wow. Thank you so much. Oh, Barbara, I'm not even going to try. Driatus? Is that right? And the whole crew. How fun.
So this is my husband, John, of 37 years. My grandson, Parker, who's a kindergartner this year. My daughter-in-law, Abby. My son, Ryan. And my granddaughter, Autumn. And not here today is my daughter and her husband and my other three grandkids who live out of state.
Barbara started with the city in 1999 and since 2013, currently serves in the role of Recreation Program Superintendent. Over the years, she has had the opportunity to serve as supervisor and a leader in a variety of positions. Barbara began her career with the city at the City Park Recreation Complex where she worked for four years before- she worked for four years before beginning, being promoted to Recreation Supervisor of the Swim and Fitness Center, where she served for ten years. Barbara has developed a formal program for athletic field rentals, brought hot air balloons to the Harvest Fest, which we all enjoyed just a few weeks ago, um, managed a COVID testing site at Front Range Community College. It was always busy, so thank you for all of that. Um, assists with an annual job fair for the Parks, Recreation and Libraries Department, and has developed strong program partnerships with the Westminster Soccer, Triple Crown Sports, Westminster Little Leagues and the Fly Mile High Trapeze. All of them are wonderful programs. Thank you for, um, being partners with them. Barbara is married and has two grown children, Genevieve and Ryan. Barbara has five grandchildren that enrich her life daily. Fun fact is that both of Barbara's children met their spouses working as lifeguards at the Westminster City Park Pool. So, see, sign up. We need lifeguards and you'll meet your next person. In her free time, Barbara enjoys walking, yoga, cooking, getting her toes in the sand on any beach, letting the wind blow through her hair on the day trips in her convertible, time with her family and traveling with John, her husband, of thirty-seven years. Congratulations. There's her pin and the twenty-five hundred dollars.
Goes to you.
That's what this was for. Thank you.
Kevin Saylor. There isn't enough to say thank you to you. Forty-five years, folks. Forty-five years. Kevin Saylor is a retired police sergeant since two thousand eighteen and has been serving as a part-time court security officer at Westminster Municipal Court since then. Two of Kevin's sons, Chris and Matt, followed in his footsteps and became Westminster Police Officers. Both have since moved on to different careers. Kevin's daughter-in-law, Betsy Saylor, is a commander with the Wheat Ridge Police Department. Kevin also has two adult grandsons, who, one's serving in the U.S. Army and the other is a senior in high school. Kevin is very proud of his family's contributions to the law enforcement profession. Kevin has been married eight years to his wife Julie. She has been very supportive of him in his roles as a police officer and court security officer. Together, they have two dogs, and what kind?
Uh, one's a healer, the other's a yellow lab.
Cool. And they're babies. Um, and, and they're children, uh, they are their children and they devote a lot of time and energy in spoiling them. That just happens. Tonight, we had at four o'clock a pug looking at my husband and he said, what time is it? I said, four oh five, and he said, she knows how to read time, because it was time to be fed. They do get spoiled or they train us well. Julie's kids and grandkids are also a big part of Kevin's life and through them, he now has a granddaughter, granddaughters, as well as two additional sons and son-in-law and daughters-in-law. Kevin is an avid hunter and angler and is looking forward to spending more time with those activities when he is fully retired at the end of this year. He is very proud of his many years of service to the Westminster community, and I didn't let you introduce your bride, so.
This is my wife Julie.
Thanks for being here and coming up, and congratulations, Kevin. And Counselor Carmelia?
All right. Do we have anyone from the inclusivity board?
Excellent. Come on, stand up. How are you doing?
Good to see you.
Um, well, I will be reading the proclamation for Indigenous Peoples' Day and, uh, this is, uh, being presented to Counselor Demott as well as the rest of the inclusivity board. And, uh, Counselor Demott, do you want to speak a few words as to why this is, uh, going to you?
We started this last year, um, at the request of the inclusivity board, and they requested, and they also last year did Columbus Day and, both of them together. They requested those again this year, and council approved this one. Um, I, for me, this is personal because I am, uh, both Italian-American and Native American. So, my mom is part of the Potawatomi Tribe, so I'm actually registered as well as most of my family and my children are. Um, so one of the coolest things about that, being in this role, when I first got elected, my tribe did a interview with me. And so, they do a national paper that they send out to, uh, people in the tribe. And so, somebody had seen it that is a resident that works in, um, one of our senior care facilities, and there was a gentleman there who is Potawatomi, who was at the end of his journey. And so, he wanted to be able to be connected to resources that were, would do last rights, you know, tribal rights for him. And so, that, somebody at that, uh, place knew about me being Potawatomi and reached out, and so I was able to connect them with somebody I met through the tribe, because I've got to go speak with them a couple times. So, it was really neat to be able to, um, be connected back, and it was because of that heritage that somebody was able to be connected back to those resources with, with our tribe. That's, uh, based, they're now based out of Oklahoma. Originally, they were part of the Great Lakes, part of the Trail of Death, if you've ever heard that story. It's a horrible thing that our government did to, to my people, but, um, it is, you know, they're very proud people, and at this point, there's no full blood, so everybody's very, very diverse in, in the tribe, and it's, you know, they like to be able to celebrate people who are members, so.
Thank you so much for sharing that. And do you want to say hello, your name and any words that the inclusivity board might have sent you with?
Sure. My name is Kate Cook. I'm the staff liaison to the inclusivity board, and the inclusivity board works closely with council to advocate and promote all voices within our community, and they take on these types of topics, and you're welcome to come to their meetings. They meet the second Tuesday of the month.
Thank you, Kate. All right. Whereas, the city of Westminster recognizes that indigenous peoples have lived and flourished on the lands known as the Americas since ancient time, and that the city of Westminster is built upon the ancestral homelands of indigenous tribes. And whereas, the semi-permanent encampment of the Arapaho peoples in the vicinity of Gregory Hill gave course to future settlements that would become the birthplace of the city of Westminster. And whereas, Colorado encompasses the ancestral homelands of forty-eight tribes and currently the city of Westminster is home to descendants of indigenous tribal nations. And whereas, the city of Westminster recognizes and values the vast contributions made to our community through indigenous peoples' arts and culture, knowledge, skills, and through these contributions, the city of Westminster has developed and thrived. And whereas, Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in nineteen seventy-seven by a delegation of Native Nations to the United Nations-sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas, the United States endorsed the United Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People on December nineteenth, two thousand and ten, and Article fifteen of that declaration reads, "Indigenous peoples have the right to the dignity and diversity of their cultures, traditions, histories and aspirations, which shall be appropriately reflected in education and public information." And whereas, the city of Westminster desires to strengthen our community and increase resilience by acknowledging the good as well as detrimental past. And whereas, the city of Westminster stands with all who stand for justice and humanity and condemn all acts of othering in the shape of overt acts or microaggressions. And whereas, by recognizing marginalized groups, the city brings awareness and provides education about such groups with the ultimate goal of unifying a community through understanding and acceptance. Now, therefore, I, Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire City Council and staff, do hereby proclaim the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day, and call upon the people of Westminster to join together in honoring the resilience and contributions of indigenous peoples in our community and across the country. Thank you.
That brings us to public comment. The public comment portion of the meeting. Thanks for everybody coming, and I was just gonna say, if you didn't want to stay for the meeting, now's the time to exit, so. Great job. The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to communicate with the City Council. Each participant will be given no more than three minutes on any topic they choose. Public comment is not intended to be a back-and-forth discussion. This evening, the city clerk has informed me, we have one email, zero voicemails by the deadline, which have been transcribed, posted on the online agenda packet and forwarded directly to City Council. Um, and how many people do we have signed up?
We have ten people signed up.
Thank you. And would you call the first person?
The first speaker is Parker Brown.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, City Council members and staff. Uh, my name is Parker Brown and I'm the Chairman of the Board of Directors for the Westminster Chamber of Commerce. I'm here on behalf of the Westminster Chamber to express our support for the fee waiver request related to the Westminster Station Housing Project by Sherman Associates. This project represents an important opportunity to address critical housing needs in our community, and we believe it aligns with the city's long-term goals for growth and economic development. As you are aware, the current market conditions have posed, have posed significant challenges to the development of new housing, particularly due to high interest rates and rising construction costs. This has led to a slowdown in the creation of new housing units, which has impacted the availability of affordable housing throughout the region. The proposed project at Westminster Station, which would deliver two hundred and twenty-eight apartment units, fifty percent of which will be, which will be priced at eighty percent of the area median income, aims to fill this critical gap in workforce housing. In addition to meeting the housing needs of the community, the project will provide substantial economic benefits for Westminster, including job creation through the construction process and opportunities for small businesses with the planned ground floor retail spaces. The location of this project at a key RTD transit hub further enhances its value, offering future residents easy access to transportation and supporting the growth of a vibrant, connected neighborhood. It is also important to note that Sherman and Associates has demonstrated its commitment to Westminster beyond this project. Their innovative partnerships, like the recent collaboration with, uh, the Chamber to support small business growth and downtown activation efforts. Their investment reflects a long-term dedication to our community's prosperity. We respectfully urge the City Council to approve the fee waiver request for this project, which will help close the financing gap and make this much-needed housing development a reality. The waiver is essential to achieving the goal of providing a missing middle housing options, creating for a more inclusive and sustainable future for Westminster. Thank you all for your consideration, and we look forward to the positive impact this project will bring to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jim Fenimore. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. Like to thank you all for allowing me to come and speak before you all on some activities at, in the community. Like to give you an update. I've been working aggressively to get the right-of-way cleaned up from Federal on the railroad right-of-way, there in, especially in Old Town. It's, weeds are like eight feet tall. So, I've been going around and beating the streets and getting public input and also support. Uh, worked with Fire Marshal Jim Gagliano, and today I got a phone call from BNSF saying that they're going to start cleaning up from Federal to Sheridan, so that it'll make that area not a, a fire hazard. It'll help with the homeless problems and it'll also keep them from dumping trash in that area, so help remove blight. So, that's a good progress on that port there for you. Also, uh, I'd like to say that I'm really happy to see that I came forth and was asking about completing eighty-eighth to Zunei. I just got some paperwork from Jim Burke, and the city is actively working on getting that put together so that we can help, uh, response time to get in that part of the, of the city that's, uh, restricted. So, that's working and coming and rolling real well. Appreciate everybody and staff that's been involved with that. So, that's, uh, nice to say. Uh, one thing I'd like to bring up to you is I talked with Kai over at Parks, and, uh, the Westminster Station is a jewel within the city. And right now, you know, it's the Westminster Station Nature Park. Unfortunately, the ground over there has as many minerals in it as its concrete in our feet. It's not really good for the native grasses that are growing. So, I would like to see council, uh, work with, uh, the city manager in Parks to next year start a, uh, weed and feed, because what's happening is the weeds are taking over, the native grasses. So, instead of having a nice grass park, and that's natural, we're gonna have a weed park. So, if we can get, we're, uh, Kai said that we're gonna get in there and get that all mowed down, and then next spring we'll look at, uh, getting in there and start taking care of those weeds so that, uh, that remains a nice gym for the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carrie Chau. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Carrie Chau, and I am the Resource and Program Development Officer with the Monge American Association of Colorado. I'm so grateful for this opportunity to attend tonight's meeting and speak with you today to introduce our organization that has been working really hard to foster culture, unity and community engagement throughout our region. Our association has played a pivotal role in preserving and promoting the rich culture and traditions of the Monge people, who are an ethnic group, um, predominantly it from Southeast Asia and who have a steadily growing presence here in the state of Colorado. Approximately five thousand Monge people live here in Colorado today, and, um, it would be remiss of me to not mention that majority of our Monge community members actually live right here in the city of Westminster, which is why I'm here tonight to speak to our community partners and supporters about a very special event that is coming up later this year. I'd like to announce that the Monge American Association of Colorado is once again hosting our annual Colorado Monge New Year Celebration on November thirtieth and December first, which is the weekend right after Thanksgiving. It's going to be held at the Riverdale Regional Park and Fairgrounds. And this two-day event will feature cultural performances, music, food, a variety of vendors and lots of fun activities for everyone. I also want to take this opportunity to express our sincere gratitude to this City Council, the city manager and the entire city of Westminster for sponsoring and supporting this very special event this year. Your partnership plays a vital role in making this celebration possible, helping to create a space where diversity and cultural heritage are celebrated. This event offers wonderful opportunities for the broader community to connect and to learn about the Monge people, our heritage and our culture. Community events like these promote diversity and foster the spirit of inclusivity, that, which is a big part of the reason why the city of Westminster is such a special place to live. On behalf of the Monge American Association of Colorado, I would like to personally invite the entire City Council, the city of Westminster staff and the entire Westminster community to join us on November thirtieth and December first for our Monge New Year Celebration. Your presence would really mean a great deal to our Monge community. Once again, the, the event is on November thirtieth and December first, the weekend after Thanksgiving. We look forward to celebrating with everyone, and again, thank you so much, City Council, for your support and partnership, and we hope to see you there at the Monge New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The next speaker is Gary Bland.
Hello, folks. Give me a second.
Welcome.
Welcome. So, one for Nancy, has Nancy's name on there. Forgot to add one situation. Make sure that everybody gets one. One is Nancy, so this is the other product that I have. Takes a lot of time to print this stuff. Give me one second here. Let me prep myself. There is a lot to talk about. I want to get those documents real quick. Once we get all the paperwork, I'll start. Thank you for your time, though, today. Everybody have a copy? Sorry, Christine, you don't have a copy, but we'll make sure we get one available to you. Is it okay to start? Oh, I guess so. Okay. All right. I'm Gary Bland, Westminster. Hello, city council. Jody, love seeing you here, too. I just want to share some information on 2487th Avenue Sunstrand Aerospace. I was in a meeting with Claire. Claire didn't know that this was a super fun site. I don't know if you knew that. I'm admitting that I did work there from actually 1979 to 1997, so I had eighteen and a half years of service there. What I'm concerned about is how Sunstrand actually was cited for contamination, and now involved was the EPA. I was there during these times. So, how Sunstrand actually, those chemicals that you see on those sheets, every one of those products, Nancy has a special one. There's sixteen cancer-causing chemicals in that list, and I'll share that with you if you need that in the future. It was funny how we got caught, in a way. I don't mean that literally funny. We actually started finding dead animals, okay, on the property. We're talking birds, snakes, rats, squirrels, and more. Actually, some deer actually showed up. I'm just kind of confused because the city is part of that, our city is near the Pearl Mac subdivision. So anyways, Sunstrand is a super fun site, no different than what Rocky Flats has done. So, Sunstrand operated 1955 to 2004. We were closed down because of the chemical, you know, compositions. Cyanide was found in groundwater, stuff like that. But what I want to get to, I'm starting to run out of time here. In this document here, this is the, if you sit there and go to EPA site, it's so elusive. It won't let you find stuff unless you've got somebody like me that'll find this stuff. What I want to go back to is if you go back to the very last few pages of this detail, I want you to look at this. I highlighted it. Here's an enlarged copy. Those chemicals still today are still cancer-producing products. They're in the ground right now. I wanted to do a demonstration, but it was tonight. I brought some samples from the Sunstrand site. I went there. I saw all the houses that they're building. We're building a lot of stuff on some pretty hazardous ground out there. Here's the report, and I'm running out of time. I want to get this to you. I want to email it to you. You guys need to read this. We threw in, we sat there, 777 tons of this waste product that you see in front of you ended up in the air on the ground out there. And it does perform, I'm over time, right? So anyways, I'm concerned about the Pearl Mac subdivision and any development that's out there. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Bruce Baker. Welcome.
Thank you. I really missed the clock on the wall. You used to have it on TV sets, the timing. Well, I'm here to share with you my experience from being on city council with your pending contract for Willdo City Attorney. I am here to give you my opinion that you should seek legal counsel elsewhere. I base that opinion on quite a few issues, but I've got three minutes. So, let's start with the biggest one and the most harm-causing one, okay? In 2020, there was a really petition recall effort, and the city clerk denied it. I'm sure the city clerk did not do this on her own. I'm sure she sought legal counsel. The legal counsel she got, as it turned out, was horribly flawed. Now, it took a district court hearing to find this. Barriers were raised on every issue. And let me read from you Colorado Revised Statutes 1-1-103. The first thing in the Colorado law is elections, because they are so important and so meaningful. And Section 1-1-103, subsection 1 says, "This code shall be liberally construed so all eligible electors may be permitted to vote, and those who are not eligible electors may be kept from voting in order to prevent fraud and corruption." And subsection 3 says, "Substantial compliance with this provision or intent of this code shall be all that is required for the proper conduct of an election." And this city used technical details. There was not one hint of fraud or corruption or anything else. Bad legal advice, and you forced 6,000 people of this city to be denied their rights for five months. In human years, that's over 2,000 human years of denial of rights, and there's been no remorse, no apology. But worse still, in the court order, thirty-seven seconds left, the court suggested that this is footnote 31 on page 21, "This acknowledgment demonstrates the fundamental problem with the absence of a meaningful protest process in Westminster City Code. And it would serve the interests of the city clerk and of future petitioners to resolve this dilemma." In the two years that I was on council, there was no attempt by your attorney to solve this dilemma. And then, I am out of time, but there's more for that. There's better help, legal help you can get elsewhere. Please seek elsewhere for legal help. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Linda Bova. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Linda Bova, and I'm representing the Guardians this evening. And with Beth McBride, and I are here tonight to tell you about the Guardians' first cleanup that we had last Saturday at the off-leash dog park. We prepared for the pup party, which was the pick-up poop party. And we prepared, it was a lot of preparation for the most of the month of October. We handed out flyers and spoke to people at the dog park. People were excited and said that they were in for it, and they would be there. We posted the pup party on the Guardians' Facebook and on the Guardians' website. The Guardians sought donations from local businesses, and we got donations from Petco, Starbucks, Lowe's, Christian Brothers, Poof Free Parks, Chicken Dun's, Kong, and Bailey's Pet Spa. Hayden gave us snake eaters, poop scoopers, garbage bags, and gloves, and the volunteer waivers that we had to use. And we used those so we could actually count the number of people who were attending. We set up on Saturday morning before dawn. The tables were ready with the Starbucks coffee, dog treats, and toys. We were ready for everyone. So, now I'm going to hand this over to Beth, and she's going to give you the details of the event. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Beth McBride. Welcome.
Thank you, Linda. I'm sorry, also, when you start speaking, could you speak directly into the mic? They're having trouble hearing on the podcast. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor McNally and councillors. My name is Beth McBride, and I was here about a month ago, or a few weeks ago, telling you that we're going to have the pup party, the first annual, hopefully. And what the photographs really show is how the event went and how the community came out in support. And I'm so happy to say, and we were really nervous, that almost 300 people signed waiver forms and were out there to help. We collected approximately 20 bags of trash between the entrances. You can see the photo of the orange bags at Sims', and then we also collected them upwards of 100. Also included is a photograph of the list of community businesses who donated. Petco, which just opened their store at 94th and Sheridan just recently, well, within the year. Their manager, Mateo Martinez, was delighted to give coupons, buckets, and even sent their trainer. And he said to introduce his store to, this regular community store here to everyone out there. We have made thank-you cards for each of the businesses that gave, and when giving out these cards, thank-you cards, people are pleased and ask a lot of questions. Christian Brothers Automotive asked if his donation of hand sanitizers was useful, and then laughed, realizing what the nature of our event was. I said yes, and they were all accepted gladly and all gone quickly. He then started to ask all sorts of questions and was amazed to see how many people were involved in the event, and several of us actually used his automotive company. Hayden Parish of the PRL provided the large black and orange bags. They were picked up supposedly today, but however, three very nice Stanley Lake Rangers led by Ranger Nate, I don't know his full name, and two ladies came over to ask how we were doing. They offered to pick up the bags Saturday when we left, and they did just that, leaving the park clean. So, it was all done, you know, an hour after we were there. As they say, "A picture speaks a thousand words." You can see by the camaraderie in the faces of the people who participated. It was a good day, and I heard a lot of people say, "I love this park." And some of the people who were there didn't even have a dog, so a lot of people travel on that. So, I thank you very much for hearing us out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Dan Collison. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor McNally, Mayor Protem, council members, professional staff. My name is Dan Collison. I am the Senior Director of Business Development and Public Affairs for Sherman Associates. I'm very pleased to be with you tonight, as well as the CEO and founder of Sherman Associates, George Sherman, here speaking in favor and bringing before you our request for a fee waiver for this important project at Westminster Station. Sherman Associates has built communities and built relationships in many different cities. We call Westminster and the state of Colorado our home. This is where we are committed, not only in downtown Westminster, but seeking to now advance a very impactful project at Westminster Station, therefore bringing into full fruition your vision and dream and investment in private development, seeking in public investment for private development to begin to advance the city's plans and objectives for that site. We believe that this project, which we've already invested over the, since 2017, over $6 million, we believe in it. We believe we have a project that the city staff finds in alignment with not only the plans of the city, but something that meets this moment in the market cycle that will bring 288 new homes and significant commercial retail. Our commitment to the business development, as well as the homes in a transit site like this, is also an important piece of the puzzle. And so, we're grateful to be a part of this. The fee waivers are an important missing piece, I would say a gap, for us to be able to accomplish this. But with that in place, we would seek to begin construction, close on financing, and begin construction in the middle of 2025. We're very grateful for working with the staff very diligently over the last many months, and we are extremely grateful for your consideration of this fee waiver request. And in this, we'll bring the kind of private development that you've been seeking at this site. This will, to my knowledge, bring forward the first major private investment, bringing nearly $80 million of private investment to the site, advancing the vision for all that you seek to accomplish at it. And in all of this, we just want to say that we're a committed private partner to your incredible public leadership in this beautiful city. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your deliberation on this important project.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tom Lambo.
Welcome. Hello, thank you very much. I'm Tom Lambo. I'm here to lift up the community of Westminster in prayer. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, in Jesus' name, we invite you here to Westminster. You are the God of all creation. Nothing is greater than you. Jeremiah 32:17 declares your majesty, stating, "Ah, sovereign Lord, you have made the heavens and the earth by your great power and outstretched arm. Nothing is too hard for you. Nothing can match your creativity, your care for your creation, your desire for us to call on your name. You're a jealous God, and you want the desires of our hearts to turn to you. Father, in these times where uncertainty is prevalent, and we must make solid decisions, we need your word to come alive in our lives. Guide us as we make these decisions. Matthew 7:13-14, you tell us how we should approach the decisions we face. Your word states, 'Enter through the narrow gate; for wide is the gate, and broad and easy to travel is the path that leads to the way of destruction and eternal loss. And there are many who enter through it. But small is the gate, and narrow and difficult to travel is the path that leads to the way of life, and there are few who find it. Guide and assist us in our life journey. We face many obstacles, and life is difficult to navigate without you. You are our God, and we are your people. In your precious name we pray. Amen. Thank you, guys. Have a nice night."
Thank you. The next speaker is Tom, I'm sorry. The next speaker is John Palmer.
Thank you. Good evening. Lot to cover, so we'll move right through it. Once again, the city missed a great opportunity this last weekend. The police department held a drug-take-back program. If you didn't look at the police Facebook page, you wouldn't have had a clue. Total missed opportunity. That should have been publicized throughout the city. Not the first time. It happens constantly. We need better communications with the city or better communications director. Next, the proclamation for indigenous people. Why didn't we do that on the 14th? That was Indigenous People Day. That was two weeks ago. We had a council meeting. Ridiculous. Why you stalled for two weeks? Next, let's move to the consent agenda. Item B, the city attorney contract. I do hope you all have looked at the public comment email sent in by Debbie Teeter. And I do mean, I hope you've read it and look at it, take it to heart before you vote on this part of the agenda. There's a lot of people feel that same way. You just heard Mr. Baker. Next, item D, the water main on Lowell with Uplands. This is getting ridiculous. How much are we giving away to Uplands? Why aren't they financing the whole thing? Now we found asbestos-laden pipes up there. That should have been known long ago. Bad deal. Another bad deal with Uplands and the city. Next, the new business. Item D, gentleman just spoke from Sherman and Associates. If they've got $80 million, they're bringing If they've got $80 million they're bringing to this project, why are they here begging for money incentive giveaways? That's our taxpayer dollars. We shouldn't be giving away money to Sherman and Associates who just stated they were bringing $80 million. They shouldn't take taxpayer money for that. Next, let's move to old, old business. The budget. Last week, three of you saw fit to vote against the budget. I think the other four of you need to reevaluate that. The $1 million to Nevada for a homeless shelter, the people in Nevada don't want that. Is that so you can feel good and by making these people go somewhere else out of our city? That's unheard of. These other feel-good pork projects that I've mentioned before, ridiculous. We have core services that need to be taken care of. We don't need pride festivals. We don't need special baseball regulations. We don't need environmental assessment boards. It's all nonsense. Core services, that's what the people want, not your feel-good pork bear projects. 32 degrees for homeless, or to get them into a shelter. No, no. If you want them to come to a shelter at 32 degrees, have them come to your house. That's ridiculous. That's taxpayer dollars being wasted. You just heard the mayor talk about being in a meeting up at 120th. That's all part of the same problem. Needs to be addressed. Finally, surveys. This will just take a minute. Instead of doing surveys, here's an idea. Let's put some suggestion boxes for like the library survey. Let's do those here at City Hall, at the libraries, at the rec centers. Instead of spending millions or half a million dollar to crack on surveys, there's other ways to do it.
Mr. Palmer, your time is up.
Suggestion boxes. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last speaker. Thank you.
City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a brief report for this evening. First, thank you to all the people who spoke tonight. We do listen, and our staff will track any follow-up required from any speaker. And special shout out to the Guardians for a successful pup party on Saturday. I wish I could have been there. I wasn't able to, but I heard it was great, and the pictures are fantastic. On tonight's agenda, I want to run through that this evening. We had the presentations and the proclamation. Tonight, there are seven items on consent. Items B, C, and D will be removed from consent, and council will act on those each individually. I would like to note when item C comes up, that's item 8C, that I will ask that that be continued to November 18th, and I think the mayor will call for a vote to do that. That recommendation needs to be corrected. That's a sole source contract, and we'll also have the other elements of the memo confirmed for accuracy, and we'll get that back to you for the November 18th agenda. Next up will be new business, authorization to receive and allocate funds from the Colorado Emergency Medical Services Supplemental Payment Program. That's a significant one, and that's up tonight. Supplemental appropriation of funds and an intergovernmental agreement with CDOT for the Citywide Intersection Visibility and Crossing Safety Improvement Project, and that's another big one for us with a lot of benefit for our community. Next will be the amending the Westminster Municipal Code to provide for the authorization and regulation of accessory dwelling units. And when that item comes up, Mayor, I'll ask Mr. John McConnell to come to the podium and seek a two-word minor wording amendment to the attachment before council addresses that item. Next will be authorization to execute a development assistance agreement with Sherman Westminster Station for that 228-unit workforce and market rate project at 6935 Federal Boulevard at the Westminster Station TOD area. And then finally, amending the Westminster Municipal Code concerning occupancy standards. Old business, there are four second readings, and tonight, no information, only items, appointments or resignations, public hearings, or a post meeting. There's no post meeting tonight. For city update, I do want to highlight this accomplishment. The Swim and Fitness Center wins, or won, the prestigious Columbine Award, and that's the 2024 Columbine Award for Renovated Facility Design by the Colorado Parks and Recreation Association. And that's a culmination of work by the team of city staff, Ascenda Architecture, and Mark Young Construction. The team transformed the 50-year-old facility into a modern, accessible, and welcoming space. And if you haven't gone to the new Swim and Fit Center, please do. It's quite remarkable, the transformation. Next slide, please. This week coming up, what's not on here is Tuesday night. Tomorrow night, there is a new Westminster Dog Park opening in downtown Westminster, and ribbon cutting is tomorrow night at 5:30, from 5:30 to 6:00 p.m. And that's downtown Westminster at 90th and Fenton, and just south of the Bolero Bowling Alley. So if you'd like to join the mayor and I at 5:30 on tomorrow night, we will be cutting the ribbon for our new dog park in downtown Westminster. On Wednesday night, October 30th, there is an Environmental Advisory Board meeting from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. That's a hybrid meeting, and that's also in person in the Pike's Peak Conference Room here at City Hall. And on Saturday, November 2nd, two things to highlight, leaf and pumpkin, sorry, leaf and pumpkin recycling from 8 till noon at 10001 Alchire Street. So bring, if you're ready, bring your Halloween pumpkins and any leaves, and we will accept those from 8 till noon at the Alchire Street site. Also is the 34th Annual Holiday Craft Show, and that's from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the MAC. For our next meeting, next Monday night at 6:30, right here next door in the boardroom, is our city council study session, regularly scheduled. There are four items on the agenda. 72nd Avenue Corridor Study Update, a concept plan for North Gate Westminster Station, the 2025 Budget Development Process Debrief with City Council. This is where we'll seek your feedback on the budget process this year and help begin the design of next year's process. And then finally, Community Engagement Quarterly Session. This is the Year 2024 in Review, an update on our efforts to overhaul access Westminster, and also getting your feedback in terms of planning events and how we undertake community engagement for 2025. Next slide, please. You can contact me directly at 303-658-2003, or jandrews@westminsterco.gov, and follow us on any one of our four social media platforms. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Any questions? Thank you. That brings us to city council comments. Counselor Ireland, since I can't see you, I will just ask if you have anything.
I just want to thank the dog guardians for fulfilling their promises. They said they would step up and help clean up the dog park and keep it managed, and I appreciate them for doing what they said they were going to do. And I'm giving a shout out to them. Thank you.
You'll enjoy the pictures when you get to see them. Counselor Ha.
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody who came and spoke tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Carmelia.
Thank you so much. I do have a question unrelated to the report that we just got. We got an email, and Mayor, you forwarded us for a community transportation study, and that was from Dr. Cog. I could have brought this up earlier as well. But I have a question for our city manager. And are we going to be doing a transportation study? And if so, you know, how would that relate to what's being done here? And yeah, if you can give some more information around that, that'd be great, and we can follow up, you know, via email if that's easier. I just remembered that that was on my mind of questions to ask for you, the council.
Thank you, counselor. I will seek from staff that information and get that back to you after tonight's meeting.
Okay. And then a big thank you to all the speakers. But Carrie, thank you for letting us know about the Hmong New Year. I thought that was interesting that we are sponsoring it. I don't believe I saw a calendar invite for us. Is there one, and I missed it?
There was a request through the city clerk that we had gotten that request, and four people responded yes for, I don't remember if it was $1,000 or how much it was.
Okay, perfect. So we responded to sponsor it. Can we get a calendar invite sent to us so that we know? I mean, she did give the details, but I'd love to have that formally on our calendars. Thank you so much. And then I also want to take a moment to give a big thank you to Gary for sharing the details again on the Superfund site here. I did share some of that information with our city manager and did not have the details to dig into that further, so thank you for providing that so that we can take a look into that. I would like to follow up on what is being built in that area, if anything. And so I'd love to figure out just more details in general. I think we'll have more questions the more we learn. And as for that fee waiver request, I think that, you know, we will be able to make a decision once we hear more about the project itself. I think that's everything. Thank you.
Counselor Azadi.
I did leave off the Guardians. I think we're all grateful, but thank you, Guardians. You guys are really doing a great job, and so thank you. And I will try to be present at your next event there, because I think it's amazing that you've churned out the support you have and have continued to keep the momentum going for that project, and it's very impressive. So thank you for all you do.
Counselor Azadi.
Thank you to everyone who came out tonight. I wanted to start with the Hmong New Years. That's one of my favorite events. I think the mayor and I went last year. It was a wonderful event, and I'm glad that they continue to engage us. And I wanted to just take a moment, so thank each everyone else who spoke as well, including the Guardians. But I wanted to take a moment to talk about the meeting that we had last Thursday. So I went, the mayor went, Counselor Carmelia went, and Counselor Ireland. To, so to rewind time, a few months ago, Michelle Gajewski, she is a board member. She was, so we both served on the board of Westminster Legacy Foundation briefly. She came to my office hours, and she talked to me about an issue that she was having. She manages a 22-acre development. It's in a shopping center called the Village at, the Village at Park Center up near the ranch. And there are several businesses there, and they're, they were all having a very similar issue. And that's with not just crime, but we, we heard a lot of horrifying stories of drug use, of nudity, of defecation, fights, fist fighting, drug, you know, there's a drug ring. So we heard all these firsthand accounts from these businesses. And the reason why I wanted to bring this up is because it's pretty relevant to what's happening right now. It's not just their, that's not the only place in the city that is experiencing this increase of crime. And it's not all related to the unhoused. There are a lot of housed criminals doing crime, right? And right after that meeting, so we heard from these businesses, and right after that meeting, I requested from staff to please develop a set of policy recommendations regarding enforcement, right? Because, so tonight, we have a second reading on our budget, and we've heard a lot of comment around the money that we're investing in, in, in supporting for the unhoused. That is important, and I wanted to make a point here that it's actually, we don't have to choose. It's not either or. That money is not a handout. It's actually a hand up, right? It's investing in housing. When we invest in navigators, we invest in preventative methods like, that will connect these folks with housing, with mental health support, with crisis intervention, with job training. That's important to solve our unhoused issue. The other side of the equation is also important, the enforcement side. And that's where I don't believe we have to choose. I think we can do both. I think there are areas in our code, and that's why I asked staff to look into this, where we can figure out how we can really clamp down on what's happening. I don't know if it's in the courthouse, or if it's, or what's happening, but there is something that has changed, and I think it's in our power to do something. A lot of it is not in our power, right? A lot of this is state-driven, as we all know, the increase. But what we can do, like we did with car thefts, we made four different code changes for car thefts in 20, in early '23. I believe that there are code changes that could occur that could help enforce our laws to make sure that the criminals, the folks who are out there, not to rebuild their lives, but to harm, harm other people, can be held accountable. So I wanted to make that point, that this budget is, it's not a handout, and it's not the only thing that will be done with the unhoused. There are two sides of the equation. Thanks.
Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Counselor Azadi. I think you're expressing a lot of what we're all feeling with respect to wanting to work with our business community, with our staff, to improve the quality of experience of doing business in the city and going to, to any of these restaurants or any of these places. I frequent that shopping center quite often. So I, so I thank you for, for sharing that, and I know we're all looking forward to hearing more from staff on what we can do proactively and also reactively as a community. I did just want to express my appreciation for everybody who came to share tonight and give a really big high five to the Guardians for having a great event and getting so many people to come. I hope that that momentum continues, and that's great that you were able to capture that. Like Counselor Carmelia, I'm definitely interested to learn and understand more about the Sunstrand site, so I'm not, I guess I'm not as aware of what the, what development we have going on over there, but certainly the numbers are concerning and potential environmental impacts there. And yeah, I think that's all for now. Thanks.
Counselor Carmelia.
I want to add as well to the comments concerning our city attorney. I just want to thank you for coming and bringing those to our attention, and from the information that I have and understand, that what's been presented this evening may not be the full story. And so I just want listeners to know that, you know, we are paying attention, and we've looked into it to the best of our ability, and we've, you know, accepted further information. And I believe with the full story or the information that we have, that at least I know that I believe that I will be making the right decision in retaining our city attorney. So thank you on that.
Thank you. I just want to add to what Counselor Azadi said at that meeting with Michelle and other business owners up at Huron. I shared with the four counselors that were there, we have never had the tough conversation about, we've been, have our compassion for the unhoused and how we treat that. But when they say no, they want to keep doing drugs, they want to keep doing whatever it is, and they don't want help, we don't have a plan for that, and we have not had that hard conversation. So that will have to be part of our hard conversation and allowing the police to do what they need to do. So I love the Hmong. I haven't missed one of their New Years before I was here, and, and now that I'm back, if you haven't been, at least come when they start. I don't know if they have a start time at nine or 10 on Saturday, but that's when they do some of their formal, traditional things that are wonderful to see. You will see the Hmong women dressed, there's like nine clans, so each dress is a little bit different. Their hats mean which clan they're, they come from, and they just are so appreciative of any time we can come. So usually I go from 10 to noon, and they have entertainment going on for those full two days. You get to see some instruments you've never seen before, and they're worried that some of the young people don't want to learn some of those instruments, so they're worried that they will go by the wayside. And so it's a fun event. I hope as many of you that can will try to attend. That brings us to the consent agenda. Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 8A and 8E through G as presented.
Mayor Protam. Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Items 8A and 8E through 8G as presented. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Carmelia.
Yes.
Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Counselor Ha.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Nirmella.
Yes.
And Counselor Ireland.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote. That brings us to item B. Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Council Bill Number 37 on First Reading, Providing for a Supplemental Appropriation of Grant Funds in the appropriation of grant funds in the amount of $1,123,740 from the Colorado Department of Transportation into the General Capital Improvement Fund for the Highway Safety Improvement Program Project.
We're under 8B as in, boy, those three were taken off B, C, and D. Sorry. It's okay.
Oh, this one's a better one. I move to approve the move to authorize the mayor to execute a revised employment agreement with David R. Frankel for his services as city attorney for 2025 effective date of January 1st, 2025.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize myself to execute a revised employment agreement with our attorney, Mr. Frankel. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Demont.
I just want to say that I've enjoyed very much the seven years I've worked with Attorney Frankel, and I think that he serves the city well, not just the city council, but the city staff, as well as the people who live in the city. So I very much am excited to keep and retain him in his services.
Counselor Ireland, I can't see you, so do you have any questions or thoughts?
No, but I'm going to be voting no on this contract, and I will talk to Attorney Frankel about it later. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Counselor Haat.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counsel, Mayor Protem Nermella.
Yes.
Counselor Ireland.
No.
And Counselor Carmelia.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
That brings us to Item C, and the city manager is asking us to continue that through, to November 18th. Mayor Protem.
I just read, as I move to continue, Item 8C to November 18th.
Counselor Demont.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to take Item 8C and continue it to November 18th agenda. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to Item 8D. Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize city manager to execute a contract amendment with HDR Engineering, Inc., for engineering services for the design of Lowell Water Main and Sunset Open Space Sewer Project to increase the contract amount by $556,270 plus an additional contingency of $83,440, increasing the total authorized expenditure with this firm to $2,461,848 from previous, not to exceed the amount of $1,822,138.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Item 8D1. Is there any further discussion?
I have a couple of questions on that. So when did we know that it had asbestos in these pipes? Do we know all along when we approved the Uplands project, or is this new information? Could someone address that?
Director of Public Works and Utilities. We have asbestos concrete pipes throughout the city of Westminster. It's a common pipe material that has been used for decades. We don't use it now currently in new installations, but it does exist throughout the city, and it's been known since the beginning. The way that the work is not removing it because it has asbestos in it, it's just a function of the construction activity that we're going to be performing and the proximity to these pipes, because with the asbestos cement pipes, they become brittle in the ground, and if we get too close to them, they'll break. So we need to replace a segment of the pipe. That's the nature of the work.
So is this overage all paid by taxpayers, or are the Uplands developers going to pay any of this, all this overage?
The, a good deal of it is with the Uplands. It will be attributed to their work and their participation in this project. So roughly from 88th Street up to 96th Street, that portion of the project will be attributed to the Uplands development, and then the balance from 96th to 97th, and then around the tanks will be the city's proportion. I don't have an exact number just yet. We've got to finish the design and go through construction, and then those participation shares will be determined.
Okay, I'd like numbers before I would approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Counselor Haat.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nermella.
Yes.
Counselor Ireland.
No.
Counselor Carmelia.
Yes.
And Counselor Demont.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote. That brings us to Item 10A1, Counselors' Bill Number 36. Counselor Azadi.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselors' Bill Number 36 on first reading, providing for a supplemental appropriation of funds in the amount of $2,092,29 to the General Capital Outlay Replacement Fund.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Counselors' Bill Number 36. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Haat.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nermella.
Yes.
Counselor Ireland.
Yes.
Counselor Carmelia.
Yes.
Counselor Demont.
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to Counselors' Bill 37. Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Council Bill Number 37 on first reading, providing for a supplemental appropriation of grant funds in the amount of $1,123,740 from the Colorado Department of Transportation into the General Capital Improvement Fund for the Highway Safety Improvement Program Project.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number 37. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Nermella, I mean, Mayor Protem.
I'm just really excited by this project. If any of you have sat at an intersection when it snowed and then figured out what, and realized you can't see the light, this will help take care of that for a lot of our intersections, as well as many other safety improvements. So this is just a great move, and I'm glad that we're able to do it. So thank you to staff for making this happen.
It was either that or get window wipers for them. Last year was terrible. Roll call, please.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nermella.
Yes.
Counselor Ireland.
Yes.
Counselor Carmelia.
Yes.
Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
And Counselor Haat.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to Resolution Number 32. Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 32, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation for the Westminster Citywide Intersection Visibility and Crossing Safety Improvements Project.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 32. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Carmelia.
Could we just get a little bit more information, a high level of what this project will be?
Welcome.
Hi, again, Paul Knippel, Director of Public Works and Utilities. So the project will impact 14 intersections throughout the city, various safety improvements. Just a list of the things, we'll have 100 pedestrian signal heads and LEDs, 100 accessible pedestrian signal push buttons, 75 snow cone traffic signal lens covers. This is an insert that will help shed the wet snow that we get in the spring, 198 three-section and 41 four-section traffic signal heads, eight traffic signal cabinets, and other associated materials such as detection equipment, mast arm extensions, and wiring units. So it's a grab bag of safety and operational upgrades that we need to. So a lot of these intersections don't meet our current standards right now in terms of visibility or the way they operate with the pedestrian activity, and so this is going to address that. We've had, we've completed two of these other grants in the past that impacted 31 intersections. So the 31 plus these 14 intersections is 55 intersections that we will have impacted, which is just under half of all of the intersections in the city of Westminster that the city maintains. So it's, it's an improvement for us. And I'll say too, that with the funding on this, it's about a 10% match. So for the 1.2 million, thereabout, cost of this, the city's putting in $127,000, $124,000.
That's very helpful. That's fantastic news. I think it helps the whole community to hear of the details, so thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Nermella.
Yes.
Counselor Ireland.
Yes.
Counselor Carmelia.
Yes.
Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Counselor Haat.
Yes.
And Mayor McNally.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to the first reading of Counselors' Bill Number 38, and the city manager has some changes for us.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. John McConnell, our planning manager, will be seeking, I believe it's a two-word amendment to the attachment. John, could you provide that, and then we would just seek that city council approve the, or consider approving the motion with this minor adjustment.
Yes, thank you, city manager. I'd like to bring your attention to page two of Counselors' Bill 38 in reference to Provision E, maximum lot coverage provision. If you look at the second portion or the second half of that sentence, and I'll read what it currently states, it currently states shall not exceed the maximum total square footage established for the principal dwelling unit. That should read shall not exceed the maximum total lot coverage established for the principal dwelling unit. We apologize for making that error in the text.
So we need the revision to Provision E?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Counselor Azadi.
Do I pass it with that change?
Yep.
I move to pass Counselors' Bill Number 38 on first reading, amending various provisions of the Westminster Municipal Code to provide the authorization and regulation of accessory dwelling units within the city of Westminster with the amendment of Section E.
Section E.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number 38 with the amendment. Is there any further discussion? Mayor Protem.
Counselor Azadi, you beat me to it. I was hoping to move this one. I'm just really excited for this, for this new code. I've been hoping to see that we were, that we'd get, you know, accessory dwelling units in our community for a really long time, and this is something that we can all, you know, potentially employ throughout the city, and it's a way to have more opportunities for some types of, you know, more affordable, not necessarily deed restricted, but more affordable ways to live in the city and more choices, and to help actually people stay in their homes as well, and stay, you know, grow and age in place. So it's just a great opportunity for us, and I really appreciate staff having worked with the council through study session to figure out just how exactly to approach it. And I think what we have here is really responsive to the need of our community and how we'd like to see that these units be incorporated into our neighborhoods, so thank you.
Counselor Azadi.
Ditto to everything she said.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Azadi. Counselor Haat.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
Counselor Ireland.
Yes.
Counselor Carmelia.
Yes.
Counselor Demont.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 39 on first reading in substantially the same form as presented, authorizing the city manager to execute a development assistance agreement with Sherman Westminster Station for the development of 228-unit workforce and market-rate mixed-use project located at 6935 Federal Boulevard in Westminster Station area.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill 39. Is there any further discussion?
I want them to clarify if these are for sale or for rent.
One second. Ms. Kimball is coming forward. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and counselors. Counsel Ireland, these are for rent.
Okay. You know that we have over 2,500 apartments for rent that are not filled right now. So I will be voting no. I don't think we need to pay any more taxpayer money for things for rent. I want things for sale. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
I certainly wish we could have more condo opportunities, but that's certainly more of a state issue. But I am really excited about this project, and it's been a long time coming, and thank you to Sherman Associates for, and George Sherman for kind of sticking with the city for, and investing in our community. This is a really important station area for us. This is our, you know, first and hopefully not last rail station, but this is bringing 228 units of, 50% of which are at our 80% AMI level, so creating housing opportunity for folks right at a station, within walking distance. And I know that you've been working with staff to develop a plan and a building that's responsive to the specific plan and the form that we've been envisioning, and this will be a fantastic gateway to the community right there on Federal at the corner. So great work to everybody involved.
Thank you.
Counselor Azadi.
I just want to concur there. I thank you so much to Sherman for the investment. I think we need more mixed-use projects. I love mixed-use projects. This is workforce housing. We know we have a housing crisis, and we need more of this. So I'm all for this. Thanks.
Counselor Carmelia.
I'll just add as well, as soon as I reread the statement that all the details of the work that you've put into this came back to me, and so I just want to say thank you for that. When I said when we see the project, I'm like, oh, yes, the project plans that we've talked about in study sessions. So thank you. I just want to say thank you to you, and thank you to Sherman Associates as well for all the work, because this is exactly what we need. And so I will go out of my way to make sure that I visit the retail once we have that. So thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Counselor Ireland.
No.
Counselor Carmelia.
Yes.
Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Counselor Haat.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Nermella.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
That brings us to Counselors' Bill Number 40. Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 40 on first reading to amend Section 5-11-1, Section 11-2-1A, Section 11-7-8A, and Section 11-4-6B of the Westminster Municipal Code concerning occupancy standards.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number 40. Is there any further questions? Roll call, please.
Counselor Carmelia.
Yes.
Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Counselor Haat.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nermella.
Yes.
And Counselor Ireland.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to Item 11A1, Counselors' Bill Number 31. Counselor Demont.
Can I ask for a five-minute break?
Sure.
We'll take a break.